Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the members.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Janice Hoppe.
Present.
Kristi Davis.
Here.
Larry Matthews.
Here.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
David Keeter.
Present.
Get everybody... Yes. Yeah. And the mayor and Mr. Pond and Leah Dozelman are excused for tonight. They are at National League of Cities.
Thank you.
And we do have a quorum. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Now we move to approval of the minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes of the February 25th, 2019, and special council minutes of March 4th, 2019? Seeing none, they stand approved. And we are going to move to approval of the agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda this evening? Excellent. We'll move forward with our agenda. We'll start with the citizens' right to speak. Citizens who made a wish to speak on any matter that's not on the agenda may do so for three minutes. Please sign on the public comment roster. When you come up, please say your name, spell your last name, give us your address. Ms. Janelle will push the button, and you will have three minutes. The green light will appear once she has recorded your address. Once the green light starts flashing, you have 30 seconds remaining. Your little light will appear when you have 15 seconds, and red light means your time has expired, and it'll be time for the next person's turn. First up tonight is Dan Larson, and Abigail Lance is on deck.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Dan Larson. That's L-A-R-S-O-N. I live at 4799 Flower Street in Wheat Ridge. I am a member of the Wheat Ridge Planning Commission, and I am also on the board of directors of the Garrison Village Condo HOA. And it's in that capacity I'm here to provide just a quick update for you this evening on the hailstorm damage to the condos that happened a while ago. You've probably seen Facebook pictures of the condo buildings with the blue sheeting on the side covering the damage. There's even been a couple of news stories. Channel 7 was out about a year ago. Well, I'm here to let you know tonight that the lawsuit against the insurance company has been settled, and we're moving forward. After the hailstorm on May 9, 2017, the roofs of all of our 16 buildings were repaired. But the siding and the exteriors of the buildings, there was a disagreement with the insurance company, and so we were forced to file litigation in June of 2018. And since then, we've been able to settle that lawsuit and begun selecting the materials that will be... that will replace the siding. We're going with siding that's a bit thicker and a little more resistant to weather. We had a meeting this last Thursday at the REC Center for our homeowners and for the residents where we discussed the repairs, scheduling, and we thanked them for their patience. We also acknowledged their frustration. It's just been too long. So the work will get underway in probably the first week in April. It'll take about two months to finish it all, but probably do two buildings at a time. And then, so our job now on the HOA is to let folks know which buildings will be repaired when. There'll be a lot of workers around. Make sure that if somebody is concerned about their dog, that the dog will be able to find another home for the day. But we really appreciate the patience that our residents have had, and I know they've been frustrating, but we are looking to get this thing resolved, and hopefully we won't see any more TV news reports or pictures on Facebook. Thank you.
Thank you. Abigail Lance with Rachel Hulteen on deck.
Good evening. My name's Abigail Lance, L-A-N-T-Z, and my address is 3381 Alchire Court, Golden, Colorado. Hi. My name's Abigail Lance, and we moved to Alchire Court two years ago, my husband and I. And we have a 16-month-old daughter. And we left the Denver area seeking, you know, a nice neighborhood. We moved onto a cul-de-sac, and, you know, there's lots of families in the area. We haven't a yard. Our old house didn't, and it was right in Baker, in the middle of the city, which was fun when it was just the two of us. But I was pregnant, and we moved, and we've really loved the neighborhood. When we did purchase the house, there was an open space... Well, I can't call it open space. Sorry, they get mad when I say that. There is a developmental property that is now being... Can't figure the right word. But the Evergreen Company is getting it prepared to sell. And our house is a Butts PA-5. I know that Roxanne has come to speak to you as well, but we are directly on that site. Like, our bedroom, like, abuts that property line. And I think when we purchased the property, we hoped that it was a really deep incline and that they wouldn't build right on top of our house. We're like, oh, and hopefully they would do a good job with working with the neighborhood. So I'm here tonight because we have a couple concerns. We're really concerned about the privacy issue. They have really raised the site of PA-5, so it's almost level now with our neighborhood where it was significantly below us before. And they're planning on putting a hotel there, and so now that hotel before, which was going to be below us, is going to be like looking into our... Because it's four or five stories, so it's now going to be looking into our bedrooms. So we're really concerned about the privacy. Safety is an issue. They cleared out all that natural brush and trees, and they've raised it up. We found a hypodermic needle in our driveway. We're concerned about the people that sleep on Clear Creek. They have clear access now to our property, and there's a lot... A big migrant population because of '70 right there that moves through there. And I have a young daughter, and it also, if they put in like a retention wall, we're concerned about, you know, her falling into that property and just having that commercial property so close to our home. Drainage is also a concern. We have, with all those rains, really bad flooding, and they've removed a drainage ditch that used to be there, and that's where a lot of our water went. And our garage does flood, and we're worried about what will happen next. Our property value, obviously. We put a lot of our money into the house, and we're afraid it's going to be really affected by how it's changing the whole feel of the neighborhood. And, you know, it was this family-friendly, and now we're going to have a hotel right on top of us. The construction noise and noise pollution, they were starting at 7:00 a.m. on Saturday. It was waking my daughter up. There was a time where my whole house was shaking. So I'm here because I'm concerned about having a barrier... I know Roxanne talked to you about this. A landscaping and a barrier and Evergreen has been very inconsistent when we speak to them, and we want something in writing before they sell the property and it goes completely out of their hands. So I'm here to ask for your support in helping us get them to agree to a barrier. I know we talked about a wall and landscaping, just for safety and privacy and to maintain the neighborhood. I'm also a Jeffco teacher.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel, and then up next is Carol Matthews.
Good evening, council. My name is Rachel Hulteen, and I live at 4690 Balsam Street. And I've got two things tonight, but the thing I want to just mention now is I was able to attend coffee with the mayor on Saturday, and it was... I think there were like 25 people there. It was unbelievable just how many people came, so many good questions. The mayor did a great job of communicating all the different things he's working on, and he shared his schedule from the last month, and I was like tired by the time he was just telling us all the things he's done. So I just wanted to express, I'm sorry he's not here tonight, but I just am grateful when our elected officials meet in the community like that to, you know, share with us what they're doing on a day-to-day basis and field really good questions. And I met a couple of new neighbors and ran into some people I've known for a long time. So really appreciated that. The thing that I was especially encouraged to hear, and I'm looking forward to hear more about, is some of the efforts around attainable housing, and I know Mayor Starker is working on that both regionally and at the county level, so I hope that that's a topic that we get to hear more about, even if it's just understanding how we're fitting in the regional picture. But then how does that trickle down to us specifically here in Wheat Ridge? So I'll be joining Andy in a few minutes for something else. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carol Matthews, and then Andy.
Carol Matthews, 3851 Hoyt Street, Wheat Ridge. I'm here to congratulate the city for its great response to the Neighborhood Revitalization Survey. We got 1,053 responses on the survey, which is a record for CZB, and we're really proud of your citizens. And we want to remind you that they'll be hosting open houses with results and also more input from you on March 19th, 9 to 11 a.m. at the adult center; March 19th, 4 to 6 p.m. at Wheat Ridge High School; March 20th, 7:30 to 9:30 a.m. at the REC Center; and March 20th, 5 to 7 at Colorado Plus. And they're saying that if you get there at 7 and have questions, they will stay for another hour. But I also want to remind you that for those of us who can't always make it during the day and at these early hours, there will be presentations before the city council on March 18th and again before the Planning Commission on March 21st. And both of those, the consultants have agreed to set up their boards and field questions before or after the meeting so that you have an opportunity outside of the meeting and to really talk and give your opinion. So we encourage all you citizens to come and, again, to give us the input because this is the future of Wheat Ridge, and if we have an opinion, we need to tell them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Andy?
My name is Andy Rasmussen, R-A-S-M-U-S-S-E-N. I live at 4465 Moore Court. And I'm here tonight... I'm on the NRS with Carol, and I'm here tonight to speak about something else. But thank you, Carol, for reminding everybody to come out and attend those events. I'm hoping that we get a huge turnout. I have here a lot of letters. These are letters for Tim Fitzgerald. Tim Fitzgerald I've only known for a few years, since soon after I moved to Wheat Ridge, but he's been a very good friend of mine for all of that time, pretty much, and has helped me a lot in getting to know this city more. He's introduced me to a few people sitting up on the dice tonight, and he's really helped me understand how Wheat Ridge works and how... He helped me a lot in my campaign for city council, my unsuccessful campaign for city council two years ago. But he's been an excellent friend to me. I think he's been an excellent friend to this city. And Rachel helped me over the last couple of weeks gathering a bunch of letters for Tim to show our support for him and what he's going through right now. So I wanted to give these to Joyce.
Or to Janelle.
Tim, I hope you're watching tonight. Love you, buddy. Appreciate you. Thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you very much for that. Is there anyone who did not sign up on the sheet but who would like to come up to speak during citizens' right to speak? Now is your opportunity. Great. Seeing none. I have a note from a counselor that they would like to address comments from citizens' right to speak. Mr. Matthews?
Thank you. I'd like to talk just for a second about Garrison, the HOA problem with their insurance company. The HOA has been talking to me for two years, ever since the storm, about their problems with what happened to them, and it was very unfortunate. And I hope that all of the neighbors are finally going to have some relief from what's been happening there, and it's been a little bit of a messy situation. But I can guarantee them all that the HOA has been diligently working on trying to resolve that situation so that we can put our hailstorm behind us once and for all. And for Ms. Abigail, I've been approached by some of her neighbors, and I will be attending the meeting this week just to observe. There've been some unfortunate circumstances there. Were trees that were just staying in place were taken out, and they've asked me to attend a meeting this week, so we will try to make sure that we're being good neighbors. And even though it's really between them, but just we're going to try and help and make sure everyone can come out of this feeling good about the city of Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. We are going to move on to our agenda for the evening, and we have one item under ordinances on first reading. And Mr. Keeter, can you please introduce that for us?
Thank you, Madam Mayor pro tem. Council Bill Number 04-2019 and Ordinance Amending Sections 11-51, 11-52, 11-53, 11-56, 11-63, 11-64, and 17-27 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the licensing and use of alcohol beverages and making additional housekeeping revisions to said code updating statutory citations to conform to recent legislative changes.
Thank you, because this is on first reading, and this is to set the date for the hearing. A motion is in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 04-2019 and Ordinance Amending Sections 11-51, 11-52, 11-53, 11-56, 11-63, 11-64, and 17-27 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the licensing and use of alcohol beverages and making additional housekeeping revisions to said code updating statutory citations to conform to recent legislative changes on first reading. Order published... Public hearing set for Monday, March 25th, 2019 at 7:00 p.m. in city council chambers, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second by Mr. Urban. Would the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our resolution, item number two. And we have no one signed up to speak. This is... Item number two is on the Public Art Fund. Is there anyone in the audience who didn't sign up to speak who'd like to speak? Great. Mr. Matthews, can you please introduce this item for us?
Thank you. This is Resolution Number 15-2019. A resolution amending the fiscal year 2019 Public Art Fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $18,500 and approving payment to Nancy Lovendahl in the amount of $79,500 with a $4,000 contingency for the purchase of Sweet Grass Dance, a stone sculpture.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. I believe that we have Ms. Mammering here for staff report.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to introduce Dina Miller. The city hired Dina to manage the public art process. She is a public art management consultant, and she's been taking us through the steps which are outlined in our public art management plan. So she's here tonight to present the selected art piece for your approval for acquisition.
Good evening, council members and mayor and staff. I'm thrilled to be here today to present to you the recommendation made by the Cultural Commission in their February meeting. There are a few details of the proposal that I'd like to share with you, including the selection process. So I'll give you a little detail about that. And I'd like to share with you the design concept by the Colorado artist Nancy Lovendahl. And then, of course, at any time, if you have any questions, I'll entertain those. First, I'd like to tell you about the art selection process. As Joyce mentioned, the process is outlined by the Public Art Management Plan. It includes appointing a public art acquisition committee made up of residents and the cultural council representation, and also one city council member. Councilmember Matthews joined us on the committee. That committee met two times over the last... Oh, let's see. It started in October, September, October. We had our last meeting in January. They set the parameters for the public art design and the artist selection criteria. They reviewed the qualified artists, and they selected an artist and a design to recommend to the cultural council. The committee defined the overall design criteria, which you can find in your packet. And I won't go over that detail, but please let me know if you have any questions about that criteria. Quite a bit of the design criteria that the committee was able to function with is outlined in the Public Art Master Plan... Excuse me, the Public Art Management Plan as well. So they defined sort of the function of the artwork, if you will, and the theme and aesthetic quality. They really wanted the artwork to complement the park and not overwhelm it. They also wanted it to celebrate the park's theme as a festival park. And they also wanted the art to be interactive and immersive, meaning giving the visitors who are experiencing the art just that, an experience, something that they could interact with and have an experience with instead of just something to look at. So with that being said, the art selection committee outlined the design, and they selected the design and the artist that's recommended tonight. As Joyce mentioned, the name is Sweet Grass Dance by Nancy Lovendahl. It was unanimously selected by the committee. Nancy's proposal was unanimously selected because they felt that it really was thoughtful of the place. It was very unique and was customized for this park. Nancy was inspired by her experience at the park. And so what I'm showing on the screen right now is her first page that describes what inspired her. She was very inspired by the graceful trees, the random patterns that the wild grasses made, and then of the native grasses that had dewdrops on them when she was there. There was also a, you know, wild sense of environment in the park, and so she really loved that. The committee outlined that they wanted the artwork to be a gateway to the pavilion that would draw people towards the pavilion and also draw people off the regional trail to the south. And in a moment, I'll show you a site plan. So she really was very impressed and inspired by the area. She always... She also wanted to emphasize that it's a festival park, so she wanted the artwork to be playful and celebrate that feature. So here's a site plan. You can see here, the red circle, there's an intersection of three paths. Here is a path from the parking lot leading to the pavilion. And then here's a path leading to the regional trail, and it makes three legs, if you will, and it creates an intersection. So this is the location for the artwork. It's at the very south end of the park. Here is the children's playground, and then here's the main parking for people who will be coming to the pavilion. Now, people may be walking across this area, the grass, through the trees to get to the pavilion, but for the most part, people will be walking down this sidewalk, walking around this sidewalk. And as you know, there's a new path along the north side of this parking lot, and they will go around the artworks and the artwork and in between it. And in a moment, I'll show you the model that I brought, made by Nancy. Here is a rendering of what it might look like. I should say what it should look like. She took the stone rendering and photoshopped it directly into the location. Now, of course, this was an existing photo, and the pathways aren't quite connected there yet in this photo, but you will see the concrete pathways here when you are experiencing it as it will look on the site. The artwork will be made of limestone, which is very sturdy and lives up to the weather here in Colorado. There will be eight pieces of stone that are reminiscent of grass blades. On the stone, there's going to be a dot pattern, and I have a sample of that dot pattern here if you're interested in seeing it in person. But this dot pattern will be made on each grass blade, I believe, on one side of the stone. And the opposite side of the stone will be a rough-cut stone that'll be nice and textural. So if you rub your hand along it, it'll have some really great texture. Not sharp whatsoever, but just a very nice textured feel. The dots are meant to depict the dewdrops that she was inspired by. So here's another viewpoint of it. And then here is an overview of the model, and if you wouldn't mind, I'll go grab the model and kind of show it in front of you. So the model is to scale, and you can see that the people that are here is representative of, I think, a six-foot male and a smaller person. So the stones will be as high as, I believe, the tallest one will be eight feet. Details, details. There'll be eight pieces. We are adding a third stone to this area right here where I'm showing with the mouse. And I do not have it depicted here. We did decide to do that after this proposal packet was printed, etc. So I just added this text recently. Let's see. Here's just an example of how people interact with Nancy's artwork. She's been working in public art for many years, and her resume is attached to your packet if you would like to review that and if you have any questions. She likes to describe her artwork as being whimsical and lighthearted. This is just a quick example of her fabrication process. She actually carves a stone herself. It's one of her favorite things, and she's got excellent skills. This is just a concept drawing of what the structural engineering will look like. She's built so many sculptures that she has worked with engineers over and over, and so has a really great idea of how these pieces will be structured for safety and stability. She will have a structural engineer stamp as approved her foundation work. And then this are just... These last few pictures that you'll see in your packet are examples of how she does her installation and some examples of her body of work. Then lastly, and I won't go into huge detail, but if you have any questions, please let me know. The budget that we've outlined, as Joyce mentioned, is $79,500. And this here, $83,500, that's in this packet, includes the contingency. And this was her... This is her timeline. We've got a tentative timeline where she would like to install in June, but it just depends on the weather because she does carve the stone outside. So if she could install in June, that's her preferred choice. And then other details, we will work out with the contracting process, but it will be a summer installation, so more details to come once we do our contract work. And then lastly, I just think I should mention that it's a highly durable material. She has called for a... Potentially to put on an anti-graffiti solution that will help remove any graffiti if... Should it happen. And there are just some other details here. One feature I should have mentioned... I'm going to go back to the site plan. There will be some really fun dots here created on this cement path leading you to the artwork and through it. And these dots, again, are reminiscent of the dewdrops and also are depicted in the carving on the stone. These will be, I believe, acid-stained onto the concrete. And again, we're working with the artist... And again, we're working with the artist to develop the maintenance criteria for that kind of work and working with the landscape architect for the park design to help us implement a strategy for making the dots last as long as possible. And with that, I would like to just entertain any questions.
Thank you. Does council have any questions? Councilmember Urban?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Specific to the location that it's being suggested in, that's within a floodplain, and you mentioned that there will be a structural engineer looking at the foundation of that, but as it relates to being in the floodplain, does that structural engineering work also take that into consideration? And I'm just concerned about it. Obviously, it's a very heavy material and whatnot, but if it were to be impacted by a flood, that could ruin the, it'll ruin the park, obviously, but it would ruin this sculpture, so is the floodplain taken into consideration with the...
Yeah, absolutely. So the structural engineer will do a site visit if needed, and then also will do a site visit after the artwork's installed to make sure it was properly installed as per their instructions. It's similar to, for example, the pavilion. So the structural engineer working on the pavilion design does a very similar, if not exactly the same, process.
Thank you.
Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you. I'm kind of from an engineering background, some form follows function type of guy, and I would really like to thank everyone for allowing me to participate in this exercise, because it kind of stretches the brain cells a little bit. And I would like to guarantee that everyone in the committee put a lot of thought and effort into trying to come up with an appropriate design. And just since I'm the resident grumpy old man here on council, I'd like to, for all the other grumpy old men out in Wheat Ridge, tell you that I can guarantee you, there ain't no blazing red eyes in our sculpture. And I look forward to being able to go down to the park when it's finished and see it. I think it will really enhance our efforts. Thank you.
Any further questions from council? Yes?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
On the diagram that you showed, scan back to that aerial view.
Sure. Of the model?
Yeah, right there. And the little black, the little dots that represent the raindrops or dewdrops?
Yeah, the green dot, the green dots here, yes.
Yeah. You have those dots on the reddish and also on the grass, is that...
This is, the model is rendered on an overlay of the site plan prepared by the landscape architect. So some of these textures you see, like the dots and these little triangles, are part of the landscape architect's design that depict the material. So if you were to look at the landscape plan, you would see those designs specific to the landscaping. So these little triangular things represent concrete, and these little dots, I believe, represent grass. So that is not part of the artist's design.
Okay. And the pinkish reddish?
Yes, thank you.
Texture, what is that?
So we worked closely with the landscape architect and the city staff to ensure that mowers could go around the sculpture without damaging the mowers or the sculptures. So we had design criteria for each of the artists that proposed that stipulated they had to have a protective landscape around the sculptures so that the mowers would not be, I believe it was four feet, it was a four-feet clearance. So she, the artist, with the recommendation of the landscape architect, is proposing a crusher fines landscaped area around the sculptures so that the mowers can go around without running into the sculpture.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews?
Talking about what we're doing here, one thing comes to mind, and I would just like everyone to know too, that although it doesn't seem apparent at first, that is access to our bike path. And one of the constraints for our artists was that we had to leave clearance there for emergency vehicles. And so they had to design around being able to allow up to fire trucks being able to pass down this bike path, so that was one of the things that we had to pay attention to when reviewing all of the different concepts. We had to give ourselves access to the creek and be able to put out fires or get ambulances down to our population. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from council? Seeing none, Mr. Matthews, motion is in order.
Thank you. I move to approve Resolution fifteen dash twenty nineteen, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2019 public art fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of eighteen thousand five hundred dollars and approving payment to Nancy Lovendall, Nancy Lovendall, in the amount of seventy-nine thousand five hundred dollars with a four-thousand-dollar contingency for the purchase of Sweet Grass Dance, a stone sculpture.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Matthews, second by Councilmember Urban. Will the clerk please pull the council?
Motion carries six to zero.
I'm very sorry, council, I forgot to ask if there was any discussion. Did anybody have any discussion they'd like to add? Great. Moving on in our agenda, item number three. Councilmember Urban, will you please introduce item number three?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Resolution number sixteen dash two thousand nineteen, a resolution in support of House Bill nineteen dash one zero zero nine concerning supports for persons recovering from substance abuse disorders. The issue is that House Bill nineteen dash one zero zero nine is a bill designed to support individuals recovering from substance abuse addiction in Colorado communities through the regulation of substance abuse recovery residences and establishment of a state fund and supportive services for housing assistance for qualified individuals.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. I believe that Mr. Urban has done quite a bit of research on this, and so I was just wondering if anybody would have any questions for him on this. Councilmember Keeter?
Thank you. Just a question, do you know the schedule? I tried to look online today and saw that, and now I forget which bill is before which committee, but I couldn't see when they were actually scheduled to be considered.
I think as most people know, the state house's schedule is a bit in flux at the moment with everything else going on, and so this bill has passed out of the House Committee and is awaiting scheduling in the Senate. So obviously, if this bill were to change drastically or otherwise not fit within how it's being presented tonight, we can consider amending or rescinding this resolution.
Any further questions?
Sorry. Just a quick novice question. When we pass a resolution like this, does this get delivered to the legislature and become part of the record for the legislation?
I can do that part of that as far as delivering it to them and making them aware of our support. Traditionally, it's up to the sponsoring council member to take that following action to ensure that those that are making the decision on these bills know that we support those bills.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Urban, a motion is in order.
I move to approve Resolution sixteen dash two thousand nineteen, a resolution in support of House Bill nineteen dash one zero zero nine concerning supports for persons recovering from substance abuse disorders.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Urban, a second by Councilwoman Kristy Davis. Is there a discussion on the motion? I would just like to say, oh, sorry, Zach, you go first.
Second.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I would just say that many of our residents has, many of our residents have had concerns regarding sober living homes and those types of facilities being in our neighborhoods. And given the requirements of this bill to require those facilities to be certified by the Colorado Association of Recovery Residences, that will allow us to further deal with any issues that come up with respect to those types of facilities in our community, as well as the more important aspect, which is to ensure that those that are in recovery have a safe place to do so. And so this bill provides for that, and I think that our support of this would ensure its passage.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion before I put in my two cents? I just want to say thank you to Councilmember Urban for bringing this to the table and bringing it so that we can support, so that we can support this further on. Thank you. Will the city clerk please pull the council?
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Item number four on our agenda, Mr., or Councilmember Urban, would you please introduce item number four?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Resolution number seventeen dash two thousand nineteen, a resolution in support of Senate Bill nineteen dash zero zero eight concerning treatment of individuals with substance abuse disorders who come into contact with criminal justice system. At issue, the Senate Bill nineteen dash zero zero eight is a bill designed to provide individuals who are addicted to substances access to services and treatment in lieu of entering the criminal justice system. This bill adds low-level drug crimes to a simplified record sealing process, as well as identifies funding to expand the law enforcement assisted diversion programs.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Councilman Urban on this resolution? Seeing none, a motion is in order.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I move to approve Resolution number seventeen dash two thousand nineteen, a resolution of City Council in support of Senate Bill nineteen dash zero zero eight concerning treatment of individuals with substance abuse disorders who come into contact with the criminal justice system.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilwoman Urban and a second by Councilman Larry Matthews. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please pull the council?
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Item number five on our agenda, Councilwoman Davis, can you please introduce that for us?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Resolution number eighteen dash twenty nineteen, a resolution authorizing Wheat Ridge's participation in the 2019 Metro Mortgage Assistance Plus Program and delegating to the city and county of Denver the authority of Wheat Ridge to take action and exercise power under a delegation and participation agreement on behalf of Wheat Ridge with respect to the program. At issue, there is a, this is a renewal of an authorization of a delegation and participation agreement with the city and county of Denver to participate in the 2019 Metro Mortgage Assistance Plus Program. MMA Plus provides the competitive mortgage loans, which will be coupled with down payment and closing cost assistance in connection with financing mortgage loans for low and moderate income persons or families. The city has participated in this program since April of 2013, and from a background perspective, I wanted to share a few things. The city and county of Denver is continuing to provide down payment and closing cost assistance paired with competitive fixed rate thirty-year VA and FHA loans. Since its inception to the, inception to January thirty-one, 2019, the program provided a grant of up to four percent for the down payment assistance due to secondary mortgage market. Pricing the loans coupled with the grant no longer generates sufficient value to provide the down payment assistance as competitive rate for the borrowers. So beginning February one, 2019, when a qualified person applies for a thirty-year fixed rate mortgage, Denver helps with down payment and closing costs from three to five percent of the loan and also provides the down payment assistance by way of a no-interest second loan that is forgivable after thirty-six months. This is expected to lower the interest rate to the borrowers. So just a little bit more information that applies to our city is since the city first participated in the program, MMA helped originate nine loans in Wheat Ridge for a total of two thousand one hundred and seventy-two, or is that two million? I'm sorry, two million one hundred and seventy-two thousand three hundred and seven dollars in loan amounts and eighty-six thousand eight hundred and ninety-two in down payment assistance. So, looks like we're doing some good things out there to help folks.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Does anybody have any questions on this resolution? Councilmember Matthews?
I would just like to point out that based on my understanding too, there's no cost to the city for this.
No.
Which I thought was, you know, it's, if we can help our folks with no cost to the city, then why not?
Any other, Councilmember Urban?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I would just encourage individuals that are looking to purchase a home to attend what is called a HUD-approved housing counseling agency that provides first-time homebuyer education classes for free. Brothers Redevelopment, it's located in Edgewater, has a class coming up on March fifteenth, this Friday, as well as March twenty-third, April twelfth, and April twenty-seventh. And those classes range from five to eight hours, and they go through everything that you need to understand about buying a home and all the costs and benefits, starting with the discussion of should I buy or should I rent, which is a critical part of that discussion. But if anybody's interested, you can look at Brothers Redevelopment's website for that information.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilwoman Davis?
This isn't as much a question but a comment, so I will say that when I bought my first town home in the city and county of Denver, I participated in a similar program, a little different, but similar. It was for first-time homebuyers, but I think that it's nice to see these programs continue. And from someone who had this type of assistance, it wasn't, you know, smoke and mirrors and difficult and those types of things. So I would, again, also encourage folks to look into these programs because they are very beneficial, and from someone who helped with my first place, it was great.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions? Seeing none, motion is in order.
Thank you. I move to approve Resolution number eighteen dash twenty nineteen, a resolution authorizing Wheat Ridge's participation in the 2019 Metro Mortgage Assistance Plus Program and delegating to the city and county of Denver the authority of Wheat Ridge to take action and exercise power under a delegation and participation agreement on behalf of Wheat Ridge with respect to the program.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Davis and a second by Councilman Urban. Do we have any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please pull the council?
Motion carries six to zero.
Great. That brings us to the bottom of our agenda. Ms. Mannering, do you have anything for city managers' matters tonight?
I do not, thank you.
City attorney matters?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Elected officials' matters, we'll start with Ms. Janelle.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
And then we'll just move, Councilman Matthews?
Thank you, not tonight.
Councilwoman Davis?
I just have one thing, and I guess I would ask if a fellow councilperson would agree to ask to put an agenda item on, on some of the happenings or the decisions from the Clear Creek Crossing site, and maybe some resolution if we found some, just so we can follow up as a council as well. If anyone would be willing to join me in asking to put that on the study session.
I'll do that.
Thanks, Zach.
Can, now that I have the two of you, and I'll look at putting that on when we look at agenda setting, but can you guys send me expectations of what you would like to see presented in that study session, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Keeter?
Only to congratulate you for bringing your meeting average over the past couple down to a nice, normal two and a half hours.
Yes, thank you. Councilman Urban?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
And welcome to our Councilwoman Weaver.
Thank you. I have nothing, thanks.
Okay. I just have a quick, a couple of quick things. I just want to say, welcome to Amanda, our first business meeting, and you got lucked out. It was a nice, smooth, easy one. And I also want to say thank you to Ms. Matthews for the reminders of the NRS open houses. And there is also going to be ASL interpreters at two of those. The dates again are March nineteenth from nine to eleven at the Active Adult Center. There will be an ASL interpreter from nine to ten a.m. on that one. And March nineteenth from four to six p.m. at Wheat Ridge High School. March twentieth from five to seven p.m. at Colorado Plus on Thirty-Eighth Avenue.
March 20 from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Colorado Plus on 38th Avenue, and there will be an ALS interpreter from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. on that one. And then March 20 from 7:30 to 9:30 p.m., wait a minute.
A.M.
A.M. at the Wheat Ridge Direct Center. Thank you. I'm like, they got, the Wheat Ridge Direct Center. And she also mentioned, and I would like to also remind you, that March 18, the NRS will be doing a presentation at City Council and March 21 to the Planning Commission. So thanks for bringing those up to us. Ms. Matthews?
If I may?
Yes.
On that same topic, I, we had a email that came in giving us a copy of that, but I assume that's on the website. I haven't had a chance to check.
I do believe they're all on the website, and I think that there's a link that goes from the homepage straight to the NRS information. Great. Well, thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight, and have a great evening.